All right, well, if we'll come to order, we're a couple of minutes late, but I think we're ready. So, welcome to the midsummer, July 10th, 2019 City of Eden Planning Commission. Guest star Jackie Huganacher, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Ovee, here, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Corso.
President.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Chair Penetwell.
Here, thank you. So before us, you know, we have our regular meeting, we have an agenda, there's one change to the agenda, and that is, as we discussed with our, when we redid our bylaws a couple of months ago, the item that's listed as number six, community comment, should actually be number five, ahead of public hearings, and so we're going to switch the order of those two. Any further questions, any other additions or changes to the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as amended.
I will second.
Motion second, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That takes us to our, already, to our fourth item, that's the approval of the meeting minutes. Jackie had submitted a slightly revised, we received those, and then Jackie submitted slightly revised. Has everyone, does anyone have any questions to those, or are those acceptable?
Has, has there been another sending of the minutes after you and I corresponded?
Yes.
Okay. So that's been approved.
I'm off, please. Three, two.
Got it, okay.
That had that, the staff report changed.
Great, thank you.
Jackie, could you, just in case people don't know, could you just identify the changes that have been made?
Yes, the changes that were made to the minutes were some comments, I believe, on the beginning of page three, beginning with a commissioner, I don't have it in front of me, and then, in the staff report for the variance on Garrison Lane, it incorrectly stated that staff supported that variance, and she did not. Chris Sacher recommended denial of board.
Makes sense. Any other changes? Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes?
I'll move approval of the amended minutes.
Second, motion to second.
My microphone keeps going in and out. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That takes us to our fifth item, community comment, there's a, for our home viewing audience, there aren't many people here, but does anyone wish to speak tonight? A friendly, familiar face.
Good evening, my name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 South Dale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. You may remember, I was here a few weeks ago, expressing my concern about the cooking odors from various restaurants that were permeating our neighborhood. Those odors can include garlic, onions, and greasy food, and it's not a pleasant experience as residents try to enjoy the outdoors. And since that time, I've discovered other hotspots where cooking odors are pervasive. It's really unfortunate that Smell-O-Vision was never a commercial success, or I could share some of those odors with everyone in the council chambers tonight. I needed to come back this evening to add to that conversation. There are simple remedies to the situation, filtering systems known as scrubbers. The technology is there, and it's not new, it's been around for a long time. Other communities have ordinances that insist that such units be installed in commercial kitchens. Richfield has such an ordinance. So please, as you review proposals for mixed-use developments, consider the residents that will live there, and the residents who already live here. It's definitely a quality-of-life issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight during community comment? Seeing none? Anyone want to make a?
I'll make a motion to close community comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Which takes us to tonight's public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, and that is a set, a site plan review and setback variance for 6950 France Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. As mentioned, we've got a site plan review with a setback variance. This property is located in the Southdale District, it's just west of the Galleria, on the west side of France, north of 70th. The site is highlighted on the screen. Note that there is a right-of-way located right here, for potential future street, not sure exactly why it was just planted in that little spot, but the site is just to the south of that. Property is owned PCD III, planned commercial district, which is the same as Galleria and the Southdale. What the applicant is proposing is to tear down the existing, about 30,000, 28,000 square foot office building that sits on the site today, to build a 10,000 square foot retail The applicant did go through sketch plan, through, with the planning commission and the city council, this is a rendering of what that sketch plan, what the building looked like at that time. And so based on the feedback that was given by both planning commission and city council, they've made a number of revisions to the plan. First, probably most important, they've significantly upgraded the building materials, and they'll present those, it's a European limestone is the, the primary building material. They've enhanced the landscaping in that 50-foot setback area. They've upgraded the windows to be more transparent, they've added electric vehicle charging station, the pine trees along the south lot line, they're, they've proposed to save those, and they've created visible water within that 50-foot, within that 50-foot setback along France. Again, all recommendations from the sketch plan. So what this request requires is just a site plan review, and a side-street setback variance from 35 feet to 16 feet, from that unimproved right-of-way that I pointed out earlier. So we typically show this when we're, this is our pyramid of discretion, where often we show this when we're down in the green, when we're considering comprehensive plan changes and rezonings. With this request, we're up at the top. This is a site plan review and a variance, which is in the, in the yellow, where we do have some discretion. Should the planning commission recommend approval, the conditions should focus on mitigating the variance itself, so they have to relate to one another. So in review of the site plan, access would be taken off of France in that right-of-way, labeled here 69th and a half, but it's essentially a driveway into the site. They do also have access from the west, over an existing access easement from that property to the west, but really, the primary access is off of France. Surface parking in the rear of the building, again, they're providing that 50-foot setback that's suggested in the design experience guidelines. One thing, mention of note, both in the review from Mick Johnson, you know, who does these reviews for all of the projects within the Southdale District, and the city engineer, they made recommendation, there's an existing sidewalk, it's about five feet wide, with a little bit of green space separation from France, they're recommending that that be eliminated, and really focus on the sidewalk, essentially behind the rain gardens, at least eight feet wide, and where we can enhance that landscape area, rather than having it so close. The applicant is agreeable to those recommended changes, both from Mick and the city engineer. The proposal, there is openings to the retail space, both on the France side, in fact, there's three openings, and then three to the parking lot. So this is really one of our first buildings, that's really is embracing that, having entrances that face France, to enhance that pedestrian experience. So here's a rendering of what the building would look like, with that, with the new building materials, and the more transparent windows. So as I mentioned, this is a code-compliant site plan, with the exception of that one setback to the north lot line. I should mention that, let's see, they are suggesting a proof of parking. So 62 stalls are required based on the square footage of the building. They've got the space on the site to, to include 62 spaces, but that, those include existing parking stalls that are located in this area here, the applicant is proposing to turn that into green space. Should they need them in the future, they could always add those back, and they would be code-compliant in regard to the parking. So primary issue, are the findings for the variance with this request met? Staff believes that the variance findings are met, the practical difficulty here is the small size of the lot, and again, that location of the right-of-way. We believe that the proposal is reasonable, in that the cumulative setback, taking both side yard setbacks, is greater than what's existing out there, and I'll show a graphic that shows that in a minute, but the existing building is much longer, the building that's proposed is a little bit shorter. There's a separation between the building to the north, that's over 100 feet, so even though they're asking for an exception to that side yard setback, there's still quite a large separation to that building to the north. And we don't believe that the proposal would alter the character of this district, this is a retail zoning district with a variety of heights and uses along France. So this is the building to the north, the bank, so you can see there's quite a large separation between the two. This graphic indicates the existing and proposed building. So the red line is the existing building, and when you add up the, the existing setbacks to the north and to the south, there's 38 feet of separation, and with the proposed, it is 51 feet, so that would be the 16 feet here, and 35 feet that's, that would be on the south. So this graphic just indicates the required setback, this is the, indicates the 35-foot required setback on both those sides. So the variance that's requested is for this area here. So with that, I will stop, and just, again, say that staff is recommending approval of the site plan and the variance, subject to the findings and the conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thanks, Carrie. Are there any questions from Planner Teague, Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, Carrie, that's, it's a question regarding that 69th and a half Avenue, so that's, that was just sort of retained for some possible, I mean, did they, was there, I mean, it doesn't even go through the block, I mean, it's just, as that shows there, just to where that parking entrance is, I mean, that's, that's, that's what the city has retained as a possible roadway easement?
Yeah, so it exists there today, let's see, so this graphic shows it, so this is planted right-of-way, the city could build a public street within that, provide driveways, access, that kind of thing.
Yeah, did the Southdale Plan, I mean, did they ever envision that 69th and a half Street continuing westerly?
Yeah, so the, the, the Southdale Plan and the design guidelines talk about an east-west, could be vehicular and pedestrian movement through the site. So this right-of-way really sets us up for providing that. So should these properties to the north develop, in all likelihood, we would require that continuation. You recall, this is the, this is the site where the Estelle project, the two tower buildings were proposed, and they were proposing to use this right-of-way, actually expand it a little bit to the south, to provide that east-west connection through the site.
So it's, we can't really say that, I mean, it's equally possible that roadway could get built, or that it's determined that it is not necessary, and that, then, my understanding would be the property that we're talking about would acquire half of that?
Yeah, if the city were to vacate this, oftentimes, half of it goes to the-
The south half would then become-
Right.
Part of the property, and that, we, then the setback requirement doesn't-
Then it would, then it would be met.
Yeah, yeah.
But that said, I, we would want to retain this, just to provide that east-west connection, so that's our, that's our opportunity to do that.
And I guess my last question, so it's currently zoned PCD III, and that designation remains, so there's no-
It would remain.
So really, what we're talking is, as far as not in compliance, is just that north side setback?
Just the north side setback, that's correct.
In other ways, okay, and then, okay. Would this have come to us, if that issue?
It would, yeah.
It still would have, as a site plan?
Yeah, even as a site plan, if it met all of our codes, we're really just reviewing it for code compliance, we wouldn't have the ability to put conditions on, other than, you know, we can require sidewalks and those things that we require as part of our standard code, like the sidewalk in front of the building.
Sure. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you.
Commissioner Miranda?
So Mick's comments say that he recommends moving the building south slightly, but the city, the staff recommended, you know, leaving it as is, was there a reason for that?
Yeah, so Mick did suggest that the building be, let's see, slightly moved 10 feet to the south. I don't have a graphic, but in shifting it, additional variance would be required to the south lot line, but given, given the fact that we've got the right-of-way here, we don't have a lot of, I put that question to the applicant, and asked them if they would be willing to move the building to the south. They've indicated a preference to leave it in this, in this spot. You can engage the applicant a little more in that discussion, but staff has posed the question to them, but they've indicated they'd like to leave it in this location here. If, if, you know, depending on the direction that your discussion goes, if you don't believe that that setback variance is reasonable, you know, there's always that option for not supporting, moving, let's see, requiring that 35-foot setback here, you know, that's, that's per the planning commission's purview, you can do that, they would be more restricted in their building footprint itself. But again, that's something that you might want to engage them with, we just, being it's a site plan with a variance, this is what they're, this is what they're requesting. Staff believes it's still reasonable, given that we've, do have that 50-foot of right-of-way to still provide that east-west connection through the site.
To your left, look to your right, none of these three will be gone. So I had a couple of questions, Carrie. First of all, following up on the site movement, I had two why questions, can you, and one might be for the applicant, can you, is, do you know why Mick thought moving it south would be a good idea?
I think, just in general, if you look at the block as a whole, his thinking is to just try to get that east-west connection more in the middle of the block. We would still utilize that right-of-way, but it potentially could get wider and shift it a little bit to the south.
Okay. My second question, probably obvious to most people, is more for the applicant, why do you not want to move it that way? My second question for you, Carrie, my second and final question, I believe, is, can you just expand a little bit on, you made, you gave some guidance early in your presentation about conditions should be related to the variance that is sought. Can you give some examples, like for, you know, I'll toss one out, does that mean, for example, we could ask for public art to be on the north side, in order to screen the building, for example, but you couldn't say, oh, well, we'll approve that variance, but then put public art on the, on the, on the street, on France Avenue, because that wouldn't necessarily be related to the variance? Is that kind of where you're going with that?
That is where I'm going with that, so it's conditions that would mitigate the impact of that variance request, so they're moving closer to the lot line. So what conditions can we place on them that mitigate that, that encroachment into the setback? Could be landscaping, so those, those types of things we can condition. We could also condition, you know, things that are required in our code, such as the sidewalks in front.
Thank you very much. With the applicant, I think that's it, I mean, would the applicant like to speak? Look forward to it. The applicant knows our procedures.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners and Staff. Ah, the microphone, I thought maybe you changed your AV there, you didn't have one. Good evening, my name is Ed Farr, Edward Farr Architects, 7710 Golden Triangle Drive, Eden Prairie, thanks for having us. As Planner Teague mentioned, we were here two months ago, in mid-May, presenting this as sketch plan. I'm going to keep my comments relatively brief, but I'm, I'll be able to answer questions, of course. Let me just start this short. There we go, here. Presentation, some of it's redundant, so I'll go through it pretty quickly for you. You know the location, this is a northward looking, the yellow stars are project, France Avenue is on the right, looking north, Galleria is, of course, immediately to the east, and the Cornelia neighborhood is to the left of our city block. This is the building that will be torn down, it's a three-level office building, the Galleria Office Building, it's 6950 France, a professional building, it's only about, maybe 40 or 50% occupied currently, as the tenants have received notice. The block, Carrie mentioned already, we're mid-block, there's that 69th and a half Street right-of-way he spoke of, on the north side of our, our lot, and France Avenue, of course, is protected by that center median, separating northbound and southbound traffic, meaning, of course, that people southbound France, enter the site off and through the 69th and a half Street right-of-way. Northbound traffic would have to either go past the site, and navigate a left-hand turn at West 69th Street, possibly doing a U-turn, coming in through the BMO Harris Bank, or coming back out through France Avenue South. We had discussed earlier, sketch plan, that we're going to be providing a proposed access easement at the western end of that 69th and a half Street right-of-way, just because the entrance to our parking lot reconfiguration is slightly further west, maybe by about 15 feet or so, than the end of the right-of-way right now, so that's what that blue square is showing, right above our site. Getting a little closer in, this isn't the colored site plan, but this just does show the dimensions and geometry of the site for you, indicating that we are complying with your extra setback on the front of France Avenue, that 50-foot that we've talked about, consistent with the, the guidelines. The, the 35-foot setback on the south, which is a side yard line, against that, that building at the corner of Ameritrade, I believe it is, and the Vitamin Shop, there are no setbacks for other PCD district adjacencies on the west, or the north, except for the right-of-way, only because it's not a PCD III zone. So as, as Carrie mentioned, we have excessive separation between the buildings, the Bremer Bank Building to the north, which, which we think justifies that request, and we appreciate his support of that. The colored site plan, he went through it a little bit already, and I'll just point out a couple of things, in addition to the changes that we made, based on feedback that we received from your body, as well as the city council, we have provided a very enhanced front yard along France Avenue there. We have colored stamped concrete pavers, visible rain garden features with infiltration areas, someone had mentioned, I believe, at this body, possibly an informative plaque for the general public to engage with that. We actually have two stormwater management BMPs, best management practices elements. As you may know, our roof water will go east into this stormwater feature that's visible on the surface, our parking lot, however, drains westward, and so we're going to make a regional improvement to that stormwater system, capturing all of that water and putting it into an underground piped infiltration bank. That's represented by this long triangle in the first row of parking on this plan, so we'll have three rows of perforated concrete pipe there, which will be in compliance with Nine Mile, I'm sorry, Nine Mile Creek Watershed District requirements, as well as the city's requirements. We've moved the bike racks back to a more convenient location, as suggested by, by this body, and I think that's it. We go on. The rendering of the building, again, we upgraded to a stone material, I can pass this around if you'd like, unfortunately, I just have a small material sample right now, it's limestone from Europe. And we're complementing that with about maybe 5 or 10% of the building material, is another accent cast stone material, which has some colored flecks in it that pick up on that limestone. That'll be trimmed around the window, and then our accent metal will be a combination of this complementary gray color, matching the, the stone, as well as some stainless steel trim. So very high-end materials. In the foreground, we're trying to depict as many of the features as we can here with our rendering skills, but we're going to try and get a pergola out there. One of the target tenants is a high-end furniture store that we're talking to, and they're going to engage with us to provide some outdoor furnishings, which will be public amenities, not just, they won't have price tags on them, but be able to show their wares, as well as have public engagement features there. We'll have benches, as well as architectural lighting at night. One of the comments that Planner Teague mentioned was that you guys had wanted the public sidewalk right along France Avenue to be eliminated. It's currently there, right behind the curb, within a few feet, and we are agreeable to just having people kind of wander into our site a little bit closer to the building, and have that route. Right now, we don't have that full eight-foot of width that came up after that, so we'll be kind of crowding our rain gardens a little bit. We're somewhat concerned, but we'll take your lead on this, that bicyclists, in particular, may have a difficult time navigating. By design, our route in front of our building is rather circuitous, it's not just a straight run-on-through, and for people that just want to go up and down France Avenue, maybe with their bikes, taking a ride sometime, they're going to have to make three, four, or five turns, in and out, in and out, just because of our design, and that's the way we want it. And so, we're agreeable if that's the, the selected option, but just to let you know, I think that might be a shortcoming, that little shortcut route along the curb line might be a benefit to keep that in place. The building materials, like I passed around there, with the limestone, and it'll be open for questions, so I already know the first question. Why would we prefer not to move the building south, per Mr. Johnson's request? I'm going to go back to this slide. The first is what Carrie mentioned, which is the fact that West 69th and a half Street right-of-way is the public right-of-way that was kind of the targeted point before, for that east-west connection, and so we think that future endeavors to provide that east-west connection, as he mentioned, could be obtained within that right-of-way at your discretion in the future, as opposed to solely on our property. The second reason is that we're actually spacing the building a little bit better on the block, the current three-story office building, he had a graphic on this, is only 14 feet away from that south property line, and because our building, unlike the other buildings north and south of us, were pushed back 50 feet west from the curb, those other buildings aren't. Remember, that Vitamin Shop and Ameritrade Building was asked to be pushed right up next to the street, different than what we're being asked to do here. So the visibility along France Avenue, left and right, we would like some visibility to the side of our building. There's not much distance right now between that Ameritrade Building, you can see it down at the bottom of this graphic, and our side yard. So we're actually spacing the buildings better with some airspace between the properties on our south side, which we think is positive, as opposed to making it look a little bit more jammed and, and tight. So because of our visibility being back from the road, that's a, kind of a key visibility viewing angle issue for us. So pushing it further south just compromises that incrementally. So pushing it further south just compromises that incrementally. So between those two issues, we prefer not to move it 10 feet. We don't want that to be a deal-breaker, but that's our preference. I forget if there was a second question already, if not, I'll stand ready for those, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. I'm sure if there was a second question, it will come up again in the next couple of minutes. Does anyone appear to have questions for the applicant? Okay, so I had one question and one clarification. I think the Ameritrade and Vitamin Shoppe, those spaces on the corner of 70th, I think they weren't asked by the city to be close to the street, I think that they were, the applicants wanted to be right by the street because of the unusual shape of the lots. So thank you for that good presentation. I had one question for you, and this is actually, you'll indulge me a little bit more for my education than for anything else. I believe you're comfortable with parking below standard, and, which is, I think, fine, I don't know if, I haven't, no one's asked any questions, I don't think there's going to be any concern with that. But it's interesting, because I read a lot of articles in other communities, shoppers are expressing dissatisfaction with limited parking in commercial districts, and I'm just wondering if you could say how you got comfortable with the lower parking than the city standard?
Absolutely, that's a great question. It really does have to do with the mix of tenants. Retail is such a broad category. You're going to find parking convenience satisfaction going down with high turnover parking lots in general. Fast food, transactional businesses where cars come and go frequently, dry cleaners, pizza, et cetera, as opposed to a longer transactional-type retail business, and also the type of product that they sell. The two tenants that we're talking to now, our client is talking to, are fine with this parking density because of their use and what they're selling, and the number of cars that come to see them is substantially lower than a high turnover type of a retail space. So, that's basically it.
Thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Miranda.
So, in Mick's comments, he showed an example of how, you know, in the future, this could be improved if there were, you know, building on top of this and adding parking underneath and whatnot. Has that, is that part of a bigger plan for this thing, or is this kind of what you're planning?
No, it's not part of the bigger plan. Those are noble dreams, but structurally speaking, infeasible. We could design this from the get-go by taking the footings down 20 feet, excavating, and then put a building on top, so everything would be pre-prepared for underground parking. That would be extremely expensive. We would have to pre-design all of the structural loads to be imposed on the structure from the get-go, so that we knew if it was going to be one story, two stories, six stories, or 23 stories, plumbing, electrical, you can go down the list. Not trying to complicate the matter, but it's not just a matter of, sure, we can build on top. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Lee.
First of all, thank you for bringing this proposal back. I know the last time, it was only two weeks ago, right, that we saw you for Sketch Plan? It seemed so recent.
Mid-May.
Last month, anyways. So now we're here to do the final approval or recommendation for approval. Are you open to still massaging it, but it sounded like you had looked at the comments from Mick and maybe taking another pass at what's happening out on the France side?
On the France side specifically, in that 50-foot, one of his comments was to replace our visible rain garden and plaza areas with a double row of trees. Frankly, that's a non-starter for us. This one-story building, set back 50 feet from France Avenue, depends upon the visibility from the cars to the signage on the wall, period. The value of land along France Avenue commands this. That's a non-starter. The trees would obliterate all of the visibility from the street.
You had mentioned something about this, you're fine with having it become more of a public realm thing, where the sidewalk, so that the possibility of that, incorporating the sidewalk within that 50 feet is possible.
Oh, yes, and we do have that now, yes. So, one could actually make a loop, they could bike or ride along the curb-lined sidewalk right now, and then they could come in on the north, or we have two intermediate connections along the length of that, as well as on the south side as well. So, people can wander in and out towards the building and back towards the public sidewalk freely at four different locations along our site, and we think that's very interesting and engaging, absolutely. So, getting rid of the easternmost one along the curb is possible, that just forces everybody to take a 90-degree turn with their bike, cart, or just on foot, and then take our nice lovely pathway through there, get close to our storefront, we're all for that, and then go back out to the sidewalk when they finish that. We were just suggesting that, that's fine for us, but truthfully, there may be some people who don't want to make that circuitous path, and they just want to take a bike ride up and down France Avenue and kind of get pushed out of their way.
I see. And had you thought at all about, is there any way to, what we have right here is it's a very rectilinear building and a very rectilinear landscaping.
Yes.
If that landscaping, and I like the concept here, so you sort of have this terrace stormwater feature, had you considered doing it a little more free-form? I was just thinking, your comment about the biking in particular made me think that sometimes you're right, it's hard to take a right and a left, but it's not bad for a bike or pedestrian to kind of take a path if it's more of a curve. Is that anything that might be a possibility for you to take a look at?
You may recall, back in May, we had three different front yard concepts that we were touring around with. One of them was a little bit more curvilinear like that.
Yes, now that you mention it, I do.
And you're right, I did pull it out, and said, gee, would this work a little bit better? We didn't have the curves kind of automatically saying, yep, it works really well. Could it be massaged? Sure. I think at this point in time, I would rather maybe just chamfer some of my corners to make that 90-degree.
Sure.
Corner a little bit better, so bike tires don't roll into the sod, et cetera.
Yeah.
I think we are where we are for a very good reason, and I think we want to stay with that. I don't think we're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater just because that sidewalk along France Avenue or curb is going to be gone. It's just one of those things that, it will have an impact on the width of our current areas, where we were down to five feet wide in a couple of places to make that stormwater feature work for us. We had certain square footages that were mandated by the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, so we're trying to get the square footage of this infiltration area to the size that they want. So if we have to widen our sidewalks, we may need to just push it a little bit closer to France Avenue to get that surface area to work.
And did I hear that the purpose of the infiltration basins right now, it's going to collect 100 percent of the roof runoff, is that correct?
That is correct. The site, right now, has two different drainage paths. We're going to keep that division, half of it flows east, half of it flows west, and we're going to keep that division. The eastern half with our roof is going to go into this infiltration basin and out to France, I believe, and then the western half flows west and is captured about on our west property line, where we'll be improving.
And how does that compare with what's existing today?
The catch basins are in about the same place on the west side, but they do have a tendency to flood, and so there'll be new oversized pipes, leading to this much larger stormwater management chamber underneath our parking lot. That's what's going to manage the stormwater quantity and quality.
And of course, before the roofs just came down in downspouts and exited off onto the grass.
That's correct.
Next to France.
Exactly. So our stormwater management is vastly superior to what's there now.
Okay.
Vastly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. For Commissioner Strauss.
Yes, Mr. Farr, yeah, the view you have up, that's good. So it looks like you're inviting, you know, commerce, you know, I mean, there's a face on France with, you know, building, I mean, with doors to the businesses as well as the parking lot, so it looks like you're inviting business from both France and then from the south, or not, maybe the west side of the building too, it's sort of.
That's correct.
Okay, I like that.
Yep. Four-sided architecture, we have that same facade treatment on all four sides.
Okay.
The stone, the tall windows, but the doors specifically are on the east and west.
Okay. So you're inviting, I mean, so it's that potential customer that could be walking down France is, you know, accessing the commercial space as well as the parking.
That's what we're offering the retailers, that's correct.
And then you've got that finished look on all four sides, that's good. Hi, thank you.
Yes, yes. In fact, I didn't provide a rendering of the parking lot side of the building, but it would be identical.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Commissioner, Planner Teague?
Yeah, sorry, thank you, Chair members of the commission. I failed to mention in my presentation that traffic and parking study was done by SPAC Associates. Max Morland is here with us this evening, should you have any questions in regard to either of those two items.
Thanks, Kerry. Are there any further questions for the applicant? I just had one to follow up Commissioner Lee's questions, was one thing, I didn't quite, you said move it closer to the street, I think in regards to, when you were having a discussion, were you saying make the sidewalk a little bigger, is that what you were saying?
Yes, let me articulate that a little bit better. The question was posed to us, would we consider having the public sidewalk right up against the curb that's existing now go away, and in lieu of that, solely have pedestrians use our pathway, which we've designed now? And our easy answer was, sure, if that's what you want. The condition then deeper down was, can you make that eight feet wide? And so the answer is still, sure, but you're kind of squeezing us because of our stormwater features that we have designed right now, where we're obligated to provide a certain amount of square footage of infiltration area. So if we need to take some of our sidewalks, which are five feet wide in front of the building and make them eight feet wide, there would be a shift of our stormwater management infiltration areas a little bit further towards France Avenue. I don't think that's necessarily a problem, because we're going to be getting rid of the sidewalk that's there now, but just so you know.
Thanks, that was a great answer, very helpful. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Farr.
You're welcome.
Well, and this is a public hearing, which allows anyone, any member of the public to speak. Is there a member of the public willing to speak?
Have you ever known you not to speak?
Well, as you know, you have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Nora Davis, I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood, and I just have a couple of clarifications. Kerry, you mentioned that Mick wanted to remove the greenery next to France Avenue? Or did I?
Not, not remove the greenery, the sidewalk, push, push that further.
So the sidewalk.
Remove the sidewalk that's there.
Okay, so, but, so then is the new sidewalk next to the curb?
No, the new sidewalk would be further in, closer to the building.
Okay, okay, because I know there was discussions about walking too close to France Avenue because it's, okay. And then clarification on the stormwater, and I bet that you can answer this. I was concerned about the parking lot and where all that rainwater was going, and you indicated back along the west. Can you tell me more about what's going to go back there and how much is it going to hold, any, because I know in the front, it goes to Centennial Lakes, but where does the west water end up?
I'll be able to answer that.
Okay, that was my question. Other than that, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Any further, anyone else like to speak? Seeing.
I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we know the routine, that means it's time for the planning commission that we can express our opinions and have our discussions and great ideas. So, does anyone else like to kick off? Commissioner Berube.
Yes, so just a couple of comments. One is, I would say to Commissioner Lee's point about, you know, instead of all the right angles on the sidewalk, I also kind of preferred the more meandering route. Personally, I would rather not have the sidewalk against the street, even if you also have the route interior. Hopefully, we're not worrying about anybody biking on the sidewalk, because they shouldn't be on the sidewalk. Our street should be safe enough for them to bike on the street. They might not be, but people shouldn't be biking on the sidewalk anyway.
That's a good point.
And it actually benefits you if people are walking closer to the buildings, right?
Right.
And then if you're talking about, you know, three feet, and do you have to then have the water feature, you know, just split the difference and have a foot and a half wider meandering sidewalk and a foot and a half wider grass or water feature, and problem solved, right? I do want to talk about the traffic study, because if I read it correctly, there'll be 300 or 230 additional cars in and out, and so I just want to make sure, traffic is a continuing issue, and I would imagine most things that go in there are going to cause increased traffic. I just want to make sure that we don't dismiss the implication. So I do, I would like to hear more about that, because 230 cars a day, what's that going to mean on France Avenue? Maybe nothing, but kind of hard to gauge from here, so I think it's important that we address that.
So you're asking, would you like the traffic person to come and?
Yeah, whenever it's appropriate, to just talk about.
Okay, Kerry, I mean, I don't know what the right word was, but you know, we're into community, we're into the discussion now, can we place that on hold and have the traffic person come up and speak?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Those were all my thoughts.
Evening Commissioners, my name is Max Morland with SPAC Consulting. I would do the traffic and parking assessment for this development. As was mentioned, this development, we anticipate to generate about 230 more daily trips than what the current building would generate if it was fully occupied. Over the course of the day, that's 230 trips, that's 115 in, 115 out. For the AM peak hour, we actually anticipate the traffic to be less than what's there now. Generally, retail is lighter in the morning than an office building, and in the PM peak hour, there'd be about 16 extra trips added, so 16 trips over the course of a peak hour, or over the course of an hour, that's about one car every four minutes. So it is an increase in traffic, but it's pretty small, especially compared to the roadway adjacent to it, France Avenue. I believe France Avenue has about 30,000 vehicles a day on it, so an increase of 230 cars is, it's not nothing, but it's definitely a small, small percentage would be out there. So we don't anticipate any significant impacts from the traffic from this development.
Commissioner Berube.
Thank you, that's what we needed to hear, or I needed to hear. Would you also then just make a quick comment? It sounds like that's probably, you know, given where it is, we probably couldn't hope for any less traffic, is that safe to say?
Aye.
What could you possibly put on there that would have less traffic, right?
Yeah, I mean, the building's getting about a third, going to be about a third of the size of the existing building.
Yeah.
It is retail, so it's a little higher density generator than an office, but it's spread throughout the day, whereas in offices, it kind of peaks.
Right.
At two or three times, so, no, probably not too many options to.
Like if it were a restaurant or whatever, you're going to have a lot more traffic?
Generally, yeah.
Okay.
The size of a retail is not very significant.
It just seems like traffic is such a nightmare everywhere you go.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we don't lose track of that with everything that we talk about, because it's a big deal.
Sure.
So thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Morland? Commissioner Thorson?
If this was medical office, built out at more of an office configuration, as opposed to the configuration we're looking at for retail, how would you think that would affect traffic?
If it was with the existing configuration?
Yes.
So 20,000 square foot medical office.
Which is a squat.
Oh, gosh, I don't have that memorized. General office is about maybe two-thirds the, how much a retail would generate. So medical office with extra patients and visitors, I would maybe estimate it'd be similar. I can't say for sure off the top of my head, though.
Any further questions for Mr. Morland? Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we can resume our deliberations, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Any further? Any, any further comments? Commissioner Berube, did you have follow-up on that, or?
I don't. My, I mentioned my thoughts and my question was answered, so thank you. No more comments.
Commissioner Lee, do you know?
Well, I find this is kind of a test case. So we had, well, as far as seeing what, what could go, what's possible. And I think that's one of the things that's always been in the back of our minds now that we have the Southdale Plan out there. I think it's, it's interesting that there, it does say that a less, a smaller building can be economically viable, so that there shouldn't always be assumptions that it has to have height or it has to have housing in order for developers to be able to make money. I know we've had that, that discussion over many, many projects. So I'm just pointing that out to say that our current zoning still seems to work. It may not be exactly what we have for a vision, but it works. I think in some ways it complements the, the low-height Galleria across, across the way. And if it is sensitively clad and designed, it could be a little gem that complements that. And I think this area could start setting itself up very nicely to, to have that feel about it, this retail feel. If our goal is to really enforce or hope to encourage that Southdale vision, I think this is really starting to say that maybe we really need to think hard about how do we get that into our code? And I'm back to kind of looking at form-based code for some of this, translating it into a language that developers can understand, taking Mick's comments and feedback and actually making it, well, he did it, make a graphic and put that, that is what form-based code is. It basically eliminates the words and puts the illustrations out there so that it's clear for what we're, what we're after. I do think Mr. Farr was correct in saying that at the time of the Ameritrade Vitamin Shop in the Row T Building, this planning commission was in a different place. We were talking about how do we engage the street? And without having much more to go on beyond that, I think our approach was to pull buildings closer to the street. So having spent the time now to do the study with the Greater Southdale Plan, I think that we've all grown a bit. But it does leave these pockets here where they're kind of caught in a crondry. They have buildings on the corner, right at the intersection, and they are very clear about that they need the visibility, so actually want to step back. So as we go forward, if we're going to try to implement this 50-foot setback, I think that we really do have to really look at some form-based code to get that into our zoning ordinance very specifically. I do feel that the building is very rectilinear as well as the landscaping, and as Commissioner Berube said, if we're about square footage of infiltration area, that there is maybe a way to make it a little more amorphous and then also bring those pathways through there to make it a little more free-flowing. That's a little more encouraging to circulation. I think it could also be really, really nice in terms of some of these businesses, if it's a furniture, if that indeed is one of the retailers, to provide that area that's almost like a patio area for them, to showcase some of the stuff. And it could be very nice, and that could lend to some of the uniqueness about this building. The building itself looks very regular and very similar, not much distinction between the, I think, four different possible tenants. This might be a way to kind of say that there's different things going on with each one. So I think that, that does have a lot of potential there. I do appreciate the fact that, again, that it is in some ways keeping, on the west side of France, keeping it a little more low-scale to address and respect the residential areas behind it and also acknowledge what we've got currently that's existing in terms of the Galleria. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any comments about the proposal before us tonight? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, I think, you know, the key, I mean, it's not a very large site, and I think, you know, with the, the area available, I, I think there was a huge improvement what was presented, and maybe it's the material selections from what we saw in the sketch plan. I mean, I have a much better feeling about how this building will look, seeing what was presented tonight. Mr. Farr, I did like his comments about the orientation. The, it, it made a lot of sense about having that, that separation on the south side. I don't think that issue on the north should be a hindrance. And, and the longer the, longer face on France Avenue, I like that rather than reorientating it east-west, I like the north-south. I think that gives and provides a better face on France Avenue. So I, I think, so, yes, I like the project.
Thank you. Any, any other comments about the proposal? Commissioner Thorson, please feel free.
I guess I'd rather give one variance to the right-of-way, to the road versus having to put Heisman on the south side to move the, the building 10 feet. It just seems to me if they want to put a building closer to a proposed road or right-of-way, Wooner, whatever you want to call it at the time, that's their risk they're taking as developers, rather than, I don't know, two variances, we can do one. I think it's just simpler and cleaner.
Thank you. Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, let's see. So I don't, I don't have any concerns about traffic. It's, you know, not enough of a difference to make a difference, and actually, I don't generally care about traffic and congestion. I'm not. I mean, in the time of climate change, then congestion, if anything, just makes the roads slower and safer. The sidewalk issue, I guess, you know, I agree with a lot of stuff that Mick says, but this is one area where I disagree with him. I think sidewalks, or bike paths, or whatever you want, need to be straight, because we're talking about transportation. And the last thing people want to do is meander through someplace. So, so let me be straight here. I'm not criticizing the project because it initially had both the straight sidewalk and the meandering sidewalk. So, because I, I liked, I was the one who liked the rectilinear layout and everything, and I still like that. I think that's a great idea. But I'm hesitating on Nick's idea, or Mick's idea, sorry, of removing the other sidewalk, partly because cyclists could use it, and partly because I think pedestrians who aren't trying to go to this building would almost certainly not want to walk and meander through that area the way it is. So I'd almost, even though it's horrible that it would be like adjoining France, I mean, to me, an ideal thing would be having some sort of multi-use path or something that would be separated like Mick wanted with trees and whatnot. But, you know, I guess, I don't know that we need to recycle that whole discussion or anything, but I guess I would rather leave the sidewalk the way it is and then keep the plan that you have today, because I think that's the best hybrid. Without having, and I think this is what the Southdale Plan needs in our implementation phase of the Southdale Plan, because we're still in the design phase, is, you know, much clearer guidance on, on what sidewalks should look like and where they're located. Because if we do this, you know, differently for each project, it's just going to be a big mess. So anyway, so getting to the point here. So I think the, the project, the way it is in terms of the layout, is fine. I wouldn't change the rectilinear part of it at all. I mean, maybe adding the slight curves he was talking about, but I think the layout the way it is is fine. I, I just think, you know, when we have six-story projects at 50th and France and one-story projects in Southdale, you know, I'm kind of speechless about that when, you know, when we have climate change. It's just such a huge issue, and it seems like we're just not addressing that. So my advice to the city council would be to have some sort of minimum height in the Southdale area. I absolutely think we need that. But other than that, in terms of this actual plan and this actual variance, I guess I don't really think 10 feet's a big deal, I guess.
Thank you. Any further comments? I had a few, and hope I can remember them. I didn't take many notes on my comments. First of all, Mr. Bernardi, Mr. Farr, I want to express appreciation for the changes that you've made to this proposal between the, I think, May 22 site or sketchpad review and today's meeting. You took a lot of our feedback and our guidance, and you made significant changes to your project to bring it much closer to how we as a city have envisioned buildings to look in the Southdale area. And I think you just did a, a great job, and thank you very much. Let's see, a couple things. Sidewalks, I, I, I'm going to speak a little bit at length here. I apologize in advance. First of all, I kind of like Commissioner Lee's idea of just, I think it was Commissioner Lee's idea, I don't want to put words in your mouth, of just making it a little bit bigger. And I want to talk about the idea, the ideas of that Commissioner Miranda's raised, and I have some concerns about that. Not, not that I'm against the idea, but I have a few concerns about it, and let me lay them out. First of all, we just completed, or hope to complete soon, a, a three-year process for comprehensive planning and including several small area plans. And we had a lot of discussions about a lot of topics. Since then, we've had a few projects come before us where we've said, oh, we want streets, sidewalks to be straight. And I'm not against that idea at all, but I'm a little concerned that that didn't come up during the comprehensive plan and that we're kind of creating in a, kind of an unofficial guidance. I'm not against it. I think it might be something we should discuss. It's a very meritorious thing to think about. But I'm concerned about creating that as a policy after not having discussed that in the comprehensive plan. During the comprehensive plan, we, for Southdale in particular, we kind of outsourced a lot of design and structure ideas to Mick Johnson and the Southdale Working Group, which worked really hard. And I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to say, oh, well, yeah, I know, let's, let's do, let's do our thing. We haven't talked about our policies and the pros and cons of straight versus meandering, but let's, let's change Mick's judgment, because we did kind of outsource that, and I, I don't think that means we need to be locked into it. One final thing I wanted to say, and I've been thinking about this for a while, I was on, my niece got married a couple weeks ago in Chicago. That's not what I, Melvin, but, so I went to Chicago, and I'm in downtown Chicago, and we're walking around, and that's a, a real pedestrian area. I mean, it just, it just is. I mean, it's just, it's probably the dream for people, like pedestrian areas. And so I was walking around an area, Streeterville, which is between kind of the water, people know Chicago, it's kind of between the water tower, the Navy Pier area. It's a more of a, it's a newer area. And we're at the stop sign, and the streets are, they're kind of straight. And so we're crossing to go north, and I'm with a whole bunch of people, just a big group of pedestrians, it was lunchtime, and they looked like natives, and everybody walked, and then there were some bollards directly across the crosswalk. And everybody, without even Blinkie and I, just shifted. And I was like the only one that was going straight. And it just struck me that people adapt to bends in the road adequately. I think it's something we should think about, but I'm, you know, to summarize my thoughts on sidewalks and whether they should be straight or not, I think it's something we should study before we start saying that's really going to be the guidance and the direction of the planning commission. One other thing Commissioner Miranda said that I, that I didn't intend to talk about, but he brought up, and I think it's an outstanding point, it does bear further conversation. It does go back to Commissioner Lee, who's really been raising the issue of form-based code a lot, is Commissioner Miranda, and my heart's with, with this cut where he is. I think, I think, I think in a few years, everything's going to be environmental. That's going to be the first cut on all reviews, and we're going to wish we'd done it earlier. And so he raised a comment, maybe we need minimum heights. So I had two comments about that. First of all, in the initial version of the Southdale Plan, and Ms. Davis is here, she's the only one in the room probably who remembers, there was, there was a lot of discussion about minimum heights, and we thought the city wasn't ready for that. However, it's interesting. Some of the guidance, we recently, there was an email that was circulated to us about foreign, you know, supposed to be about form-based code, it was really about mixed use, but the author spoke about form-based code. I looked up some more of that stuff, and I've been reading about form-based code. I'm, you know, I'm a, I'm an attorney, I'm not an architect, but I've been reading about form-based code, because I think it's something that we've got to deal with. The author of that article, interestingly, on mixed use, who also writes a lot about form-based code, his implementations of form-based code usually include minimum height requirements. And I, so I just thought that was interesting. Not related to this project. Back to this project, I think the applicant did an, to summarize my thoughts, came back to my first thing, the applicant did an outstanding job, listened to our feedback. I think it's the project they like, and I'm, I'm in support, along with just a little variation. I would suggest expand, making the sidewalk just a little bit bigger and pushing everything a foot and a half. If anyone would like to respond to my comments, or else we could have a motion, if everyone feels they've had their, or responded to anyone else's comments. Otherwise, you know, if anyone would like to make a motion or have anything further to say, have at it. Let me know.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend that the city council approve the site plan review we saw today with the side-street setback variance from 35 feet to 16 feet from the unimproved right-of-way, according to the staff report and staff findings.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Point of clarification, does that include removing the sidewalk along France Avenue or not?
It does not.
I have a second.
Motion, a second. Planner Teague?
So if, if, if you wanted to be clear that you wanted that sidewalk to remain, we should probably state that, because in Engineer Milner's memo, he's making that recommendation. So that was one of, one of the conditions. So if you'd like to see the sidewalk stay, that should be a condition that's added.
Would you like, Commissioner Lee, it's your motion, would you like to add that as a condition, or would you like to just keep it as it's recommended by staff?
I think I would like to leave it as it's recommended, because that is a recommendation by staff, and I think it needs further vetting probably, or most likely.
Okay.
It's still a recommendation, in other words. It wasn't a requirement.
And then?
Was it a requirement by Chad?
To remove the existing sidewalk, yes.
It was a requirement. I guess I would like to remove that requirement pending further study or proposal by, by the applicant to show what he intends. Basically, what he intends is leaving that there and, and showing his existing frontage.
Okay, so there's a motion to, to approve this as recommended by staff, with the exception of not removing the existing sidewalk on France Avenue, is that correct?
Not requiring the removal.
Not requiring the removal.
Of the sidewalk on France.
Okay, and you're, and you're good with that second? Is there any further discussion about that? Jackie, could we take a voice vote, please? I mean, could we take a, a roll vote?
Yes, Commissioner Berube?
I'm going to vote against it, just because I really don't want that sidewalk.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Navarro?
I'll, I'll vote aye. I agree with Commissioner Berube, I'm fine with moving forward. So that, so we have, what, five to one?
Mm-hmm.
I agree with you, but, I agree, but I'm happy. So I'm happy with it, aye. It's not, so this goes before the city council?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Good luck with council. Thank you for your discussion tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that ends our public hearings tonight. We've already done community comments. Item seven on our agenda is reports and recommendations. Are there any reports or recommendations? Item eight, correspondence and petitions. Are there any of those characters? Item nine, chair and member comments. Are there any, do members have any comments? Commissioner Lee?
I would just like to respond to what Resident Nora Davis had stated tonight and just query our commission to see if, if that is something we...
I would just like to respond to what Resident Nora Davis had stated tonight, and just query our commission to see if that is something we might want to look into, to put on as a future work plan item. She is correct that, obviously, cities like Richfield and Bloomington, where they have greater density, or have those nodes where now they've got multi-use and a lot of restaurants, and that is true. It's a very pretty standard as far as handling orders, that we investigate to see whether our city ordinance or codes are in alignment with it. It may in fact already be, I don't know, but now that we are going to probably be seeing a lot more activity happening in restaurants as well, in the Southdale area, that we think about that and see if maybe that needs a little updating. I don't know how people feel about that.
Just before you, fine topic. Carrie, have you given any thought to that since the first Kia Call months ago?
Not a great deal of, you know, we haven't done any research or anything like that, but what staff was thinking is, it's time to start thinking about our work plan for next year. So we were thinking of bringing a draft, just to begin the discussion at our next planning commission meeting, so perhaps this could be one of those topics that you all consider.
Do I remember correctly, though, that when this came up before, wasn't the idea that it's, it's either engineering or building codes or health? It was under, it was somebody else who was going to do research, and then find out like what the options are, and then we go from there? Is that right?
It is enforced through our health department. We did do some research prior to the city council, and provide them with, you know, limited information, but it's a worthy topic for discussion, for consideration of a code change.
We need that information before.
Oh, yeah.
To have a know what they're talking about.
Right, and even if it becomes a work plan item, something that we study, you know, we do the research, maybe the conclusion is, we don't have a problem. Or maybe we do. So it doesn't bind us into, it just, it commits us to study it.
Does anyone else have any further thoughts on that topic?
It seems like that's a reasonable way to get this going, is get it in the work plan, and just get it in front of us.
Very good. Anything further on that? Commissioner Lee, has that worked for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further on that? Any other member comments? Chair does not have comments tonight. That takes us to item 10, staff comments. Does staff have any other comments tonight?
No, other than, we are, we will have a work session soon to talk about some of our education, ongoing education, now that we have our new commissioner, but haven't set a date yet, but likely August.
Thank you. Anything further? Any questions for Carrie? So I got one final thing. It's midsummer, so good night unto you all. Give me your hands, if we be friends, and Robin shall restore amends. Anyone, that's not a planning commission thing, but is there any motion for adjournment?
In rhyme?
On that note.
I motion to adjourn.
On that note. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.[1753.13]